Okay, I've got 7:33. I am going to call the meeting to order. The first thing we have is going to be approval of the agenda. I've got two things I would like to add. Does anybody else have anything before I tell you mine?
I do not, Phil.
Do you need a roll call first?
I think we do.
Yes, we do. I always forget that. So, start off with, obviously, Mario.
Yep.
Steven.
Yeah.
And Jerry Lee. I can see you nodding. And saying thumbs up. So I'm gonna take it Jerry Lee, you were there, but you are on.
Yes, here. I was having trouble finding my mute.
Donna. Taking a roll call. Can you hear us? You're on mute. I see Donna is on, but she has not responded.
Yes, unmute would help, right?
Yeah. There we go. Great. Okay. So back to where I jumped the gun again. And that is the adding approval of the agenda. And so I've asked Mario, do you have anything? Steven, did you have anything for the agenda?
I don't. Steven?
Thank you. Jerry Lee? Nothing? Okay. And Donna, anything for the agenda?
Uh, nothing, no.
Okay, I would like to add two things. I would like to add appointments. I've got some appointments I'd like to do tonight. And I'd like to add those after, say, old business. After we talk about town election, we can do that. And the second thing is, I was gonna do when I get done talking here, is just to add some comments I have. If you wanna call them mayor's comments, whatever, just a couple of odds and ends. That I like to say, and that's it. So all in favor of the agenda as amended?
Hi. Hi.
Steven, yeah, Steven's fine. Just a question of, Phil, like, where did you want to, the second piece, where did you want to put that? Is it going up the top or at the back or?
Oh, that was right after I get done with this approval of the agenda.
Okay. Oh, you'll do that first. Okay.
Yes. Okay, I'm gonna take it that the agenda with the adjustments that's been made. And I have a couple of quick announcements. It looks like the path to the Ring Road, for those of you who want to walk over to White Flint Plaza, like PetSmart, Rodman's, that area. The path, the fence has been open. I don't know who did it or why, but it was been open. However, the fencing up to the plaza itself is not open, although apparently there's a path you can walk down further and around. Going up by the new apartments. But however, delegate Carr's been meeting with Pete Fossilman and Elrich's office, Mark Elrich's office. And they think at this point that they may have a way forward. Lerner's lawyers were very concerned about liability, and so they wanted to have like a a million dollars worth of indemnification. County's only offered so far like $400,000. And, and they're also, Lerner's also interested in what the county might do as far as maintaining the facility to make sure that it's safe. And so these things are being worked out right now, but it appears for the moment that there is a good end in sight. We just don't know yet. The second thing is, for those of you who might be following it, if you hear a bunch of noise and see some things by the pool, the bathhouse renovation has started. They found some additional problems as they've gone along. So if you haven't donated, please do, but the bathhouse renovation is underway and is expected to be completed by time the pool needs to open. And that was it for me on those things. So I will go next to approval of the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? Any comments, changes, or otherwise? Mario?
Not for me, Phil.
Okay, thank you. Steven?
I didn't get a chance to read them, so I have no choice but to approve.
Okay. Jerry Lee?
No changes.
And Donna?
No changes, thank you.
And I also have no changes, because I couldn't do that. So, okay. So it is now 7:38, and I am to presentations by residents.
I've got a question. This is Ken Schwartz.
Sure.
So when you say there, there's gonna be a new discuss, there's gonna be a discussion added to the, excuse me, to the town updates on appointments. Does that mean that who is gonna be appointed to the various committees?
Yes, in short, I will be appointing people to three committees and Kaki will, I will be announcing appointments, I should say, to three committees, and Kaki will be announcing appointments to the other three.
So they're associated with that, I understand, and I'm not, I didn't apply for it, but I understand that the ARPA committee members have been chosen. But has that become public?
Donna, that's a question for you, because you've got that committee.
The the group is not public. I have not had the chance to ask the members how they feel about having their names publicly listed. I think that's just an appropriate request of them, and as soon as they answer one way or the other, it will be posted.
And they've been asked whether they agree to their names being public?
No, not yet.
Well, insofar as I understand, I don't, haven't seen the committee members, but insofar as the committee has been selected, I think for transparency, it behooves the council to tell the community who is on the committee. And I would also suggest that those who were not selected, they should be informed that they were not selected.
I did select those that were not selected. Thank you.
You did inform them?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm not sure there is such a choice to not have, Steven, I'm not sure there is a choice to not have it public, based on the Open Meetings Act.
Correct. Based on the Open Meetings Act. Needs to be.
All the meetings have to be open, so, yeah.
Yes, and published, and notes taken. So Donna, we would need to know, Barb should know as soon as possible who those people are, so we can get it out on the town website and so forth.
Thank you.
I guess those, those folks would be able to, maybe they have the choice, if they choose not to volunteer, if, you know, knowing that it's a lot of the open meetings, you know, I would assume they would just get that chance to confirm or, or step off, step out if they choose, but that's their choice.
Actually, to be quite transparent, the, because this is not a appointed task force by the mayor, it's only individuals who counsel me. It doesn't fall completely under the Open Meetings Act. However, if the group is fine with that, then so am I.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure, like, over 99% sure that anything that leads to like a policy has to be an open meeting. So if this, if the group is not really meant to kind of pull together thoughts on a policy, a future policy, then I'm not sure what the purpose would be.
No, they're informing me as to what to present to the board.
I think, is it, let's put it this way. In terms of, I think it's a best practice that we have it open and that we have it, you know, some types of notes taken, an agenda for
No, of course.
Very simple type things, but I believe that it, it's something that should be open unless there is some overriding reason not to be, which I can't think of.
Agreed. I don't disagree. I don't disagree, but I would like to give the group that option first. I think that's fair.
Fine, as soon as, but as quickly as possible, we need to do that before you get started, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other residents?
Sorry, this is Malcolm Russell Einhorn dialing in. I couldn't get on on Zoom for some reason. Are we on the we've, we've already approved the minutes and we're on presentation by residents?
Yes, sir.
Great. Yeah, so this will only take a minute. I'm, I was encouraged by Jerry Lee to put this forward at this juncture. I was interested in seeing how we could get a proposal in front of the council to consider, if it has not already been approached about this, is considering some kind of renovation to the dog park within the old tennis court. And I don't have any particular, you know, design considerations or budget, other than making it more attractive and usable and potentially slightly larger. And by larger, I just mean, you know, through landscaping and grass, et cetera. But I think, I'm not alone. I've talked to a number of residents who feel that for, for pretty little money, it could be spruced up to not only be more attractive, but be quite a bit more usable. And that the, you know, the, the, the surface of the tennis court really deters people from using it to its full potential. So I'm just putting it forward, really for suggestions as to how we might go forward to develop a plan, develop some budget considerations, what, whatever could be done to put forward, you know, a range of options and have sort of thoughtful discussion about it, and maybe, you know, poll people some informal way about whether there's significant community support for this. So that's my question, really.
Well, I appreciate the input, and I can tell you that one of the things we'll be talking about a little bit later is the Parks and Open Space Committee. So we'll be publishing when we get that, I'll be discussing who's gonna be on the committee, and once the committee gets going, we'll publish when the meetings are, and I think you'd be welcome to come and help them work on the proposals for things like that dog park.
Great, yeah. So that's helpful confirmation that that would be the, the proper venue for consideration, and I wasn't, I wasn't absolutely sure that was the case, but I'm glad to hear that.
Yes, definitely. And again, we'll have, you know, we'll put the information out there and be happy to have you join us. I'll be the liaison to it. And we'll, you know, help them with suggestions and ideas and who to poll and what to do and so forth. So, great.
And that, that group will be formed roughly when, as a, as a committee?
The announcement will be made tonight of the people who will be on it, and then
Right.
We'll just need to get the committee together to come up the day for the first meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. Any other presentation by residents, questions, anything else before I move on? Hearing done, I am going to go to our action items. The first thing we have is authorization for contract for executive search services, and I will let Town Manager Matthew speak to that one. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Bringing forward this evening for your consideration or recommendation to retain services of the Mercer Group Associates. Their proposal is included in your agenda packet. The primary contact would be Senior Associate David Deutsch. Mr. Deutsch has conducted recruitments for chief administrative officers for a number of communities in Maryland, including Bowie, where he was a longtime city manager, Cambridge and Westminster. He's also done work for the city of Dover, Delaware. The fee would be $17,000 plus reimbursement for any required expenses, such as conducting background checks, advertising. And those reimbursement, reimbursable expenses would not exceed $5,000. So at most, we're looking at $22,000. The estimated timeline for the search would be about 110 days, which I would say is fairly standard in my experience. So be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So I guess the first question I have, the obvious, have you consulted with any or contacted any other firms and got any other estimates?
Yes, we did get a proposal. Andrea had actually done that before her departure from Raftellus. That name may not be familiar for you, but Raftellus is a fairly large executive search firm that actually acquired the Novak Consulting Group that I believe you worked with before, when you hired Andrea. Their fee, obviously, as a much larger corporation, some of their fees have, have gone up. I actually had used Novak a couple of years ago to hire some department directors. Their fee that they quoted was $26,800. Also for reimbursement for expenses, they were estimating about $2,000 to $2,500 for advertising. And for each finalist background check, a range of $175 to $500 per finalist background check.
Great. And you, I assume you've already talked with the firm you're suggesting?
Yes, I'm familiar with them.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Can someone remind me what we allocated for this search?
I believe you allocated $30,000.
Yes.
Right here? Okay. All right. Okay. It's fine.
Okay, do I hear a motion to authorize hiring of the executive search? I'm sorry, I forgot the name.
Mercer Group Associates.
That's right, Mercer Group.
Just real quick, Phil, I'm sorry, Bob, you said you worked with Mercer before, you're of a place with you or someone, a colleague, former colleague of yours in the past, or?
Um, I, yes, I certainly worked with Mr. Deutsch for many years when he was a with the, you know, city of Bowie. He was there for quite some time. This is not why I'm recommending him. Mr. Deutsch was actually the interim town manager and the consultant when I was hired in Westminster. And I've seen some of the work that he's doing in Cambridge in terms of the recruitment brochure.
Okay, yeah, and then honestly, if it's okay, if you are recommending him, because you know him and I trust
Yeah.
the expertise base, and if you feel like he could bring good candidates to the table, and, I mean, we, you know, there's no timetable, but if if you feel he has the good, good rolodex of people he can reach out to for this position, then I'm, I support moving forward with Mercer Group.
Yeah, I think one of the things that's important for the town, I think, is to have someone who, you know, kind of has good contacts in the state of Maryland in particular, because I think we probably will be more likely to draw kind of from within the state. I think either Raftellus with Catherine Tuck Parish, who you worked with before, or Mr. Deutsch, both have those contacts.
Okay. That's fine. I have no other questions, Phil, so I would put together a motion to proceed.
I'll second that.
Great, thank you. Any questions before we vote? So we've got a motion on the floor to hire the Mercer Group for approximately $23,000 to provide recruitment for a new town manager. All in favor? Mario?
Hi.
Steven?
Hi.
Jerry Lee?
Hi.
And Donna?
Hi.
Great, and I also, so that'll be unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the next thing we've got is authorization of contract for sidewalk improvement project. And I've got, I, I'll start, I'll let Barbara fill in, but basic overview is that we're looking to redo the sidewalks. The piece that runs along Oxford up to Kennelworth. Plus, there's a little area on Kennelworth where there's a driveway that needs to be redone, and we're also going to reshape the crosswalk that's across from there. It's right on the corner where the telephone pole is. That crosswalk has been seen as being too steep, not ADA compliant, and seems to have some issues, so we're gonna do some work there. In addition, we will be doing that chunk of Waverly that goes basically down from Kennelworth, and it's the piece that's, right now is the horrible asphalt. We will not be doing the piece that goes along Waverly down to Penn Place. That's, that is yet to be looked at. And we've put out the bids we received, or put out an RFP, we received 11 bids of them. There were five that were considered to be responsive. Of those five, we picked DNF Construction. They were considered to be the, the low, the lowest responsive bidder. And the work would be approximately $150,000. So first, I'll open for any questions, or Barb, do you have any comments?
I would just add that Jason Azar, who I think many of you are familiar with, did contact two of the firm's references. Both spoke very favorably of their experience with DNF Construction, and so that they would hire them again if given the opportunity. Also, just wanted to add that the budgetary line item currently has approximately $205,000 available for sidewalk work.
Phil, this is Jerry Lee. I had a question. I think when we spoke about the sidewalks in November, we talked about making sure that there would be a proviso, that there would be coordination with the towns consulting arborist. There, particularly on Oxford, but really in any location where the work would impact trees. Is, is that going to be part of, or can we make sure that we include a note about that upfront in the, as we make the award?
Yes, and it's also been put in the contract documents that the, we have to be mind, that they have to be mindful of trees according to what the town wishes. So, yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you, because the committee was particularly concerned about the alignment on Oxford shifting and making sure that, that that is, you know, not going to be detrimental to the existing trees or the ability to plant new trees there.
Yep, and I'll ask Barb just to take a note to make sure during those discussions that that's solidified, but I know that that's already part of what we've got in there. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Donna, Steven?
I think I missed it, Phil. You were saying that the crosswalk may be fixed up, but I didn't catch where you were saying. Was that across Kennelworth, or was that across Montrose?
It's, it's Kennelworth and, and that, I'll call Oxford Extension. It's basically up on the corners. You turn the head towards the schools, that short stretch of Oxford that heads to the school parking lot. Right there is a, that piece that's right on Kennelworth. And Oxford there, next to the telephone pole, wasn't installed very well, so that's the piece we're gonna do. It's a real small piece.
Okay, so the corner, not, not the crosswalk across the street, then?
No, just a, just a sidewalk on the corner there.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve DNF Construction?
I have my mute off, so I guess I might as well, um, go ahead. If I can make a motion to approve this contract to construct the sidewalks at Oxford and Waverly down to Montrose.
Great, thank you. Second?
Hey, Phil, this is Mario. I'll second that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Jerry Lee, Donna?
Aye.
And Donna?
Aye, thank you.
Aye, thank you, and I vote aye, so it's unanimous. Okay, takes care of that, thank you. And I've got 7:58 on my clock. Now back to Barb, we've got the town election update.
Thank you. You all probably recall that back in January, we had kind of a preliminary discussion about this year's election. At that time, I recommended, and there seemed to be a concurrence to hold the town's election, again, by voting by mail. I was driving into work a couple of weeks ago and happened to catch on WTOP that the governor had lifted the emergency declaration that he issued in January due to the Omicron variant. That kind of caught my ear, because the charter amendments that were adopted by the town council in 2020 and 2021 all kind of linked voting by mail to being under an emergency declaration by the governor. So I scanned those pieces of legislation, sent them to our town attorney, Ron Bolt, just to see if I was correct about that. And he did opine that there is a strictly a link between voting by mail and the charter language and an emergency declaration by the governor. So Mr. Bolt and I had kind of a back and forth discussion about that. And his ultimate opinion was that we could not solely hold the 2022 election using vote by mail. Because there is no, currently no emergency declaration by the governor, and the town in and of itself, under the charter, cannot issue a local state of emergency. Following that conversation with Ron Bolt, I had a conversation with our former town manager, Andrea Fox. He's always been very generous with her time if I have questions. And also talked to our chief election judge. After talking to both of them, my recommendation to you this evening is that we plan on holding an in-person election in 2022. There may need to be some adjustments in terms of making sure that we have appropriate safety protocols in place. You know, just assuming that the pandemic is going to be ongoing. But that's what Andrea recommended, and that's what our chief election judge also recommended. So my thought would be that we would sort of put together an election plan outlining some of those protocols. Bring that back before you make sure that you're comfortable that we're, you know, conducting everything safely. And I think just as a reminder, anyone in Maryland can vote absentee, so if for some reason someone had a concern about voting in person, I think one of the steps we may want to take is just remind residents that they could take advantage of, you know, absentee voting. The chief election judge and I also had some preliminary discussions about maybe holding the election in an alternative location. If the weather was good, perhaps, you know, erecting a tent on the grounds near Penn Place where people could maybe feel a little bit more comfortable with voting outside. So I think there's still a lot of discussion that needs to take place, but I guess I just wanted to bring this forward this evening. See if you concur that we should just kind of proceed with voting in person, and then I'll start working with the election judge and bring a plan back to you, most likely in March.
Thank you, Barbara. This is Mario. I am, I'm glad to hear that. I would support moving ahead with in voting, obviously with proper safety measures and maybe some alternative or optional locale. But I think it'll make our lives a lot easier not to have to outsource all this work and vote by mail again 100%. And obviously, like you said, those who want to vote absentee have the right to do that by law, so they should or could. Otherwise, I would recommend we, you proceed, explore that, having, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is Jerry Lee. Would it be possible to include in your plan a reference to last year's plan, just in case, as has now happened twice, we have a sudden shift in the situation and a new governor's emergency order were to come into being in the next three months? I, I mean, I'm certainly hoping, and I know we all are, that nothing like that would happen, but given that we've had that happen twice now, perhaps we could put a reference to that previous plan, that that could be brought into play if we needed to on short notice?
We can, I can certainly explore that, Jerry Lee. I think one of the questions I have, you know, elections are a little bit new to me. It's just how much lead time there is in working. is just how much lead time there is in working with the company we've used before, which was Electech. There's probably a point where we either need to know we're going forward with them or we're just simply out of time. But I can certainly explore that a little bit with Electech and kind of see what their time parameters are.
It would be interesting to know what their last sell date would be because then, because we would have the March and potentially the April, but probably not the April meeting. Something did change between now and then, but. But I'm kind of with Mario, and I think with what you were saying, Barb as well, the charter says what it says. We need to follow that. There's no state of emergency then, no change to the normal election.
Yeah, and I will say that, you know, the community that I worked with previously did hold an in-person election in 2021. I know that Friendship Heights also did because I spoke to their town manager late last week. My thought would be to do what we did in Westminster and what Friendship Heights did last year is that we sort of develop a plan trying to put in place all the safety protocols. And we run that by, you know, the health officer for Montgomery County. We found that very helpful in Westminster to work with Carroll County's health officer, just to have them review it. They offered some input, and I know Friendship Heights did exactly the same thing in Montgomery County last year.
Anybody else? I've got a couple of things, but anybody else? Okay, so I would like to strongly recommend that we use, look at using Electech to at least publish and count the ballots. Because one of the issues we've had in the past is that the judges end up staying up till late at night or everybody has to wait until the next day to get the ballots counted and so forth. And it would be good if we could have a way in which the ballots could be done quickly. I know Electech, because I've talked to them in the past when I was at MML. And they would be able to either count everything immediately or we could ship it to them. They could have it counted pretty quickly. But I think it may be possible for us to have the count done immediately. It would be done automatically with a machine, and I know we could save the ballots then for any recounts if somebody for some reason wanted to recount or inspect the ballots. So I'm putting that out there.
Sure, I'd be happy to have a conversation with Electech and see what services they offer.
Because I know that they, when we had talked in the past, you know, the nice thing was the ballots were already printed. They were all serialized. And so it was pretty easy just to hand them out, bring them back in. And then from what I recall, they would like rent us a machine or something. We just speed them through the machine. But I'll let you take a look at that, just my suggestion.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Okay, anything else on that before we move to the next thing? Okay, so this is where I'm going to talk about appointments, reappointments for town committees. Specifically, there's three committees I'm going to talk about. Kaki will be in March appointing the committees that are codified by law. I'm only going to talk about the land use, parks and open space and budget work group. And I'll first start it off by saying that thank you very much for everybody who has served on these, on the especially land use. And we're going to have a few new people. And everybody is welcome to come upon or to come look at, you know, come attend meetings as you want, if you want. And, you know, provide input to the extent that the committee can take it. And what we've got here is all the, in these committees, land use and especially, well, all three committees, basically, we're appointing everybody all at once. The problem is, is that that would mean that all of the the terms would expire at the same time. So I'm going to be reading off names and then the terms. And that, and this is done to stagger the terms. Doesn't mean that you couldn't reapply later on if you decided you wanted to. For some reason, you decided you wanted to drop out, you could drop out earlier. But to help ensure that we've got a turnover that's reasonable so that everybody's not leaving all at once or up for, you know, up for reappointment all at once, we decided that the best thing was to stagger some terms. So with that in mind, I will start off with the land use. And AJ Galati, sorry if I mispronounced your name, he will be appointed for three years. John King, appointed for four years. George Martin, appointed for four years. And Ed Shawaker, sorry, I realize I'm probably not talking loud enough, appointed for two years. So just to make sure everybody heard me because I'm having some problems here. AJ Galati will be three years. John King for four years. George Martin for four years. Ed Shawaker for two years. We're going to reconstitute the Parks and Open Space Committee. And that will have five members. And that's going to be, start off with Susan Welker. She'll be for three years. Naveed will be for two years. Spencer Morrison will be for one year. He's a junior at WJ. And, you know, he's already agreed that basically once his senior year is over, they'll have to step down. Jack Mandell will be for three years. And Jean Haran will be for four years. Moving on to the budget work group, we've got Ari, who will be for two years. Frank McGuire for two years. Naveed, again, he will be three years. Ken Schwartz, three years, and Steve Welker, three years. Do I need to, does everybody get that or I need to repeat anything? Obviously, put it in the minutes and so forth.
Got a question, if that's all right?
Yeah.
Are there chairs appointed to those committees?
Committees can pick their own chairs.
Thank you.
Okay.
Phil, this is Jerry Lee. For the parks and open space and budget work groups, which are new or reconstituting, are there council liaisons designated?
I know I will be parks and open space. I don't know if there's a council liaison because Kaki had intended to work directly with the budget group. So we'd have to ask her, but right now I don't know that there would be, although there could be for sure if somebody wanted to do it. And Stephen is obviously the council liaison for land use.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments? Okay, that'll move on to new business.
Phil, this is Jerry Lee, just checking, aren't committee appointments, aren't they subject to review of the council? Aren't we supposed to make actually a motion? And I think we have in the past.
That's fine, and I can ask for that. These were the ad hoc ones versus the ones that are codified. But I will be happy to, be happy to take a motion. If anybody has any discussion, would like to make a motion to approve what I've just read. I can reread anything if you'd like to.
I think in the ad hoc doesn't, doesn't work the way as the committees are in the ordinance, the official committees in the ordinance that do have council approval.
Okay, if that's not, if that's not the requirement, that's fine. I didn't realize that.
No, I'm just going off the top of my head, though. I could be wrong. But I don't have my, I'm not at my computer tonight. But I don't think we've been asked in the past. I think the mayor at the time is just appointed wherever they wish.
Yes, and I concur with you on that. Yes, definitely, the ones have to be appointed for the ones that are codified in law, the ones we, their official standing committees. But these other ones, ad hoc, don't have to be. If people want to do that, that's fine with me. Be happy to take a motion and we can do approval or not. Or anything else, otherwise we're good. Any, okay, I will consider it to, the ad hoc committees to be done. And again, Kaki will talk to the other committees in March. So that moves us on to new business at 8:14. Do we have anything for new business? I'm not aware of anything. Okay, then we will move on to town updates, American Rescue Plan. Donna?
Thank you, Phil. Thank you for your time. So the American Rescue Plan, our next steps, as you'd heard earlier, I'd mentioned the individuals who had applied to be part of the task force were notified and all of them agreed to join the task force. Thank you all. You know who you are at this point in time. In the next seven days or so, we should be meeting as a group to identify some nuts and bolts of what the task force will do, what its mandate is, how it's organized, as well as asking permission, as I mentioned earlier, to publish their names and the notes. Up in the last month, we've met with our legal counsel, Ron Bolt, as well as a number of correspondents, sorry, my light keeps going out, to discuss aspects of ARPA, including regulations and understanding of the Open Meetings Act and how to approach the possible, okay, I give up on that one, how to approach the, the ARPA, you know, dispersment in general. Ideally, the process that the task force would be, would include was obviously notes on each meeting, the definition of the task force, expectations and objectives. The ARPA has been finalized. Its final decision has been posted and approved. Number of meetings have been held. We are considered what they call an NEU, which is a non-entitlement unit. And they've put together specific clearinghouses and webinars to, you know, to exchange information, ask questions, follow up on applications and so on, as well as understand what other NEUs are doing with these funds. So I'm looking forward to that. There will be a webinar on reporting in the upcoming couple of weeks, which I think Barb, you and I will be attending to have more information to use going from there. And that's all I have for now.
Donna, I've got a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
This is, my understanding is this is not a, we'll call it, they deposit money in the bank sort of deal. This is something where we have to basically get approval to do what we want. And then we can apply for the funds or how exactly?
Actually, I believe the first tranche of funds, 50%, have already been dispersed to us as a town. And that was prior to the, the final review of what the rules and regulations are. Any funds that were dispersed, had they been dispersed prior to the final ruling, were deemed kind of like grandfathered. So whatever you did with them, you know, that's fine. Now that they have more detailed and actually quite much, I have to say, easier rules to follow with the second final approval, based on all the feedback that they received from towns such as ourselves. I think it's fair to say that applying and incorporating that into our town, it's going to be that much easier as well as reporting on it. So they made the rules broader and more accepted. But again, to answer your question, yes, they have dispersed 50% and the next 50% should be in the next, I believe, 12 months.
And so basically, we just have to account for using the funds per the guidelines?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a really broad and open process that they've established. It's quite refreshing.
Great, okay. Anybody else have any questions before I move to council member?
I had a couple. Donna, it sounds like they, are they sending the actual physical, not physical, but like they're already awarding the money, so the money is in the town's coffers? And then we just had to account for how it's being used? It's not, I guess I was on the assumption it was something where you had to explain what the project would be, get that approved, and then the money will be pushed out to it. It sounds like it's the former rather than the latter, but am I understanding that correct?
It is. There are funds that are already in our coffers, and we do not have to ask permission. We have to follow the rules and report on the basis required of those rules. And unless I think that they, unless they identify or are concerned with any kind of abnormality or deviation from those rules, it's, you know, it's a very open and accepting process. So yes, we do have those funds. If I'm not mistaken, Barb, can you confirm, please?
Yes, you're correct. We've received about $517,000 so far. I believe the next tranche is due in July of 2022, I believe.
Sounds like the town can spend it following the rules, but then has to report how it was spent following the rules when it's all done.
That's correct. Yeah, there's specific timeframes for when you have to file reports. As Donna mentioned, there's going to be a second one on reporting. Webinar, the state has hired Hagerty Consulting to basically conduct webinars specifically for NEUs. So there's one next week on reporting. Unless the rules have changed, there's a report that is supposed to be due in April of 2022. But I believe you have to have received funds, but also spent them by that time. But that's one of the questions I sent through the portal to see if I can get that answered next week.
And just to add to what Barbara's saying, in my experience working with government grants, even if nothing has been spent submitting a report saying as such is quite acceptable and customary.
Donna, I think you said the rules were finalized recently. I think I last looked at them maybe about a month ago. Was it, was it after then that it changed or was before then? Like, should I go back and read a new one or?
It was just about a month ago, and the final ruling came out about a month ago.
Okay.
Unless I'm, Barb, that is correct, right? I just want to double check.
Yeah, it's, I think, right, because I think you had just announced that the final ruling had been issued at the January meeting.
Right.
Would you mind, Barb, or Donna, checking on it? And then just send a message to the mayor and council email like with what the final date was?
Certainly, and I can even send you a link to the information on the Treasury Department website.
Great, great, thank you.
And I've also shared that information with the task force so that they can brush up and review those rules and regs so that they can hit the ground running. And yes, it was about a month because I remember on our last committee meeting, I was quite excited to have some good news to present.
What exactly is the goal of the task force again? What are they doing?
The task force ideally is to inform me, not necessarily, not the mayor, but to inform me about how he disperts funds as town members, getting that feedback and thought process as what would be the best for our town. I think we did a very thorough and very fair, I would have to say, choosing of those task force members, the age range, as well as the experience and the years in town and not in town are, I think, pretty, are pretty across the board. the years in town and not in town are, I think, pretty, are pretty across the board even. So we have feedback from all, I'd say, corners of Garrett Park, if you will, equally, in order to help inform that thought process. And based on those discussions, then I'll come to the council and discuss what I think is the, is some of the better ideas to go forward with, yes.
So the, so thoughts gathered by that committee would be brought to the council at some point?
I would think probably most of them, I'm not sure about all of them, because I can't speak for what's going to happen. I'm not at Fortune Intelligence yet. But should they all be appropriate? Sure. If there are some things like, let's build a carnival, I don't think I bring that to the table.
No, I don't mean, we wouldn't need to see the whole thing, but I guess just wanted to ensure that information would be shared with the council of kind of what,
Yes.
what the committee was feeling as the best, the best opportunities for the town, so that the council could work with that.
Exactly. And in the end, it's the council's decision.
Thank you.
Donna, this is Jerry Lee. So are you still considering pursuing working jointly with other local municipalities to hire some management support?
Actually, that's a great question, and one that I'm going to bug Barbara with later to this evening. To my knowledge, that still is in progress, but I, because I'm not, I'm not Barb, I don't have all the details on that. So if Barb, you can speak to it, that'd be great.
Sure. I have had a number of conversations with the managers of the other small towns during my tenure. And we were sort of moving more in a direction initially of maybe not hiring a person that would be shared, but actually hiring a firm that has expertise, so there would be some shared overhead cost, but then each town would pay the firm directly based on their own utilization. I think with the final rule being issued and their reporting requirements being greatly simplified, I think we're all still learning a little bit, Jerry Lee, but I think the thought may be that with the final role really making things so much easier for NEUs, that there may not actually need to be an ARPA manager. I think we're all still kind of trying to get our arms around that, but there definitely seems to be a move in the direction of having reporting templates and things like that. So it may not be quite the burden that we thought it would be at the very beginning of this discussion. So I think we're still going to wait and see, but that was the last call that I had, is everyone wanted to sit in on a few more webinars and learn a little bit more about the requirements.
Okay, thanks for that. I'm looking forward to seeing the information about the, the, the task force that's supporting your work, Donna, published and, and information about their meetings made public, so that everyone in the community can, you know, feel comfortable that we're being open and transparent about how we're, we're planning for the use of this funding.
Absolutely, I'm looking forward to it, too.
This is Ken Schwartz. Can I ask one simple question?
Sure.
The question is, pursuant to what Jerry Lee just said, shouldn't the, you suggested the first meeting will be within seven days. Shouldn't that meeting be posted?
It's just a preliminary meeting, just getting to know each other, and like I said, asking them, are they, are they acceptable, are the parameters acceptable? Sharing names, hoping a meeting is such a, but thank you for the offer.
I would suggest that if it is subject, you decide to make it subject to the Open Meetings Act, you can't choose which meetings willy nilly
Oh, no.
are open and which ones are not.
Right. No, it's an all or nothing. I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and we'll move on to Arboretum Committee and Councilmember Bennett.
Thank you. The Arboretum Committee, first of all, advertisement has an open meeting on Wednesday evening at seven o'clock, if you'd like to join by Zoom. They are making plans to work with the town office to post an informational and educational sign for the native plantings that were put in place in Porcupine Woods. The committee sees this as part of its educational meeting, and it's within the budget that's already set aside for the committee's educational work. They are continuing to work with Barb on an RFP preparation for the invasive vine removal project, which is a little bit of a pilot project to test out if this is a, a good way to address some of the invasive vine issues we're having with town trees, particularly in, in areas like Cambria Park and Porcupine Woods. Also, we wanted to make sure that everybody knew that we have recently updated the town's online tree map. Some of our Charlie Andrews and Charlie Kaylor and a few other folks on the committee have done a lot of work to update and move the map into a more open software, so that it can be more easily updated. So you can go to the town's website, search for Arboretum Committee, and right there, there's a link to the town's online map. You can do it on your phone and look up a tree as you're walking by to see what kind of tree it is. And that's it for this month.
Great, thank you.
I've got a question for you, Jerry Lee, if I may. Is that all right?
Sure.
I think when the tree survey was done, I just thought about this the other day. I think when the tree survey was done, I think they did not include Strathmore. Is that correct? Or do you know?
Um, you know, I'm not, I can't answer that off the top of my head.
May just, the reason why I'm asking, it may be helpful to just check with the committee to see if that wasn't included. If it wasn't, then I would suggest that it get added to the inventory. And, because it could, could I think protect the town a little bit? Decades ago, there was consideration to widen Strathmore to a four lane highway. I think it would probably help protect the town and its trees if, if those were put in the inventory as part of the arboretum, if they're not already, because it wouldn't be able to very easily ever consider that again if, if those trees are included. Just a thought.
Okay, so I just double- All right, thank you. Yeah, I just double checked, and the, the trees along Strathmore Avenue are included in the current online map, and they are all numbered, so they are considered part of the tracked trees in town. But thank you for, for noting that.
Great, thanks.
Jerry Lee, if I may, can you please repeat, because I think it bears repeating, because it's so cool, sorry. What is the access point for this tree map for Garrett Park?
If you go to the town's website and find the Arboretum Committee page, which you can either do through the search, or, you know, through the menus, right there on the Arboretum Committee page, there's a, a link that says online tree map, or online map of the trees.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations, that's awesome.
Yeah, the team did, or the committee did a great, a great amount of work to, to make that more accessible and more up to date.
Great. Okay, how about Archives with Councilmember Grande?
Sure, Phil, thanks. Okay, an update for the best council, best committee in town, that's the Archives Committee, no offense, Jerry Lee. I'm just kidding. Okay, so the Archives Committee met on January twenty eighth, and it was chaired by Karen Teal, who was their chairperson. At that point, the committee reviewed the proposed budget that that was submitted by Clay McDonald, and it was approved. They also discussed other activities in the archives that they want to look for for future exhibits and programs. One of them was being the Women of Garrett Park exhibit that was being considered for next year or later this year, so that's good. New display in the post office, if you haven't seen it or have been by there recently, celebrates the longtime Garrett Park resident, Donnell McLaughlin. For those who aren't aware, he had not just contributions to our town, but he also was the designer of the UN emblem. So if you go search online to Google search for UN emblem, he was the developer for that. Outside of that, just a lot of discussion on the continuing of organizations is to continuous preserving and collection of archives. We're going to need a bigger post office, I think, at some point. That's my guess. So all good stuff, and Claire and the team there just do incredible work on reliving and telling the history of our town, and that's it for now, Phil.
Great, thanks. Any questions? Move on.
Not a question, but just a note, Mario brought up the UN sign, but that's the reason why the, there's a little UN sign on the end of the street sign at Waymouth, because that's where Mr. McLaughlin lived.
That's right.
Nice, Stephen, nice.
Okay, Stephen, you've also, historic preservation?
Yeah, I'm trying to read my notes and juggle phones here. So committee had a meeting last week, I believe it's the ninth. Lot of things, trying to summarize, so that the committee was really pulling together a checklist of recent and current initiatives, which was a really good process to kind of look back at what's been accomplished, and also what is kind of on the front burner and the back burner now. Some of those examples were the, the Town Hall sign. A, a sign was put up to replace one that was kind of falling apart before. But then the Historic Preservation Committee did some research, and I actually took part in some of that, too, to find out what the original sign was that was put on Town Hall when it changed from a religious use to a town meeting hall use. So the goal was to kind of mimic that aesthetic. So the committee had been working, done a lot of work with Tom Ruckey, a resident in town, and he's going to be able to put together a fabrication of the sign that replicates what was put up. I can't remember if it's the late sixties or the early seventies when that sign was going up, but it's basically going to recreate that sign, but in a more weather resistant material. So committee's very excited about that, hoping that that sign can go up by late spring, but don't want to put too much pressure on Mr. Ruckey. Pen Place porch is another thing that's been in, in the works. We got a historic area work permit approval through to the county with Barb's help and Andrea's help before that. And that was approved to put a railing that kind of circles the dining area on that porch. The town maintenance staff had some concerns about some of the, the boards that were rotting, including like a post there. So a plan was put together to replace some of that wood to kind of match what is there. Work on that, repair is going to start next week. I think it's next week, the twenty first. And also, the committee sent out a reminder to all the historic property homeowners in town, which is about a little under fifty houses that are in the County Historic Master Plan District, just about the availability of historic preservation tax credits. There's a deadline of April first for that, so anybody that's in that zone that is foreseeing any work should look to take advantage of that. Sorry, I'm being long winded, but that's the report for historic preservation, so. Any questions, or?
Okay, hearing done. We'll go back to Councilmember Bennett for Strathmore redevelopment at St. Angelo Hall.
Thank you. The county hearing examiner held the hearing on January thirty first and February first. The town of, I represented the town of Garrett, Garrett Park. The Garrett Park Estates and White Flint Park Citizens Association participated, as did the Citizens Association for Symphony Park. All three of us asked the examiner to consider adding additional conditions related to traffic and pedestrian safety, safety as part of the review for the potential, potential zoning change. The hearing examiner has forty-five days from the end of the record, which was approximately February third, to send a report to the county council, which will then make a decision about the zoning change at some point after receiving and reviewing that report. The town, even if the zoning change is put into effect, the town will continue to have opportunities to influence as the plans for the actual design are developed and matured with the county, with the county park and planning department, uh, planning department. So we'll continue to stay in touch and see how this develops. But I just want to say that even if the zoning goes into place, we will still have opportunities to influence those plans. And there's, you know, a lot of the comments we were making really were about how things were, were going to be designed. So we'll, we'll stay, stay up to date on that and share information as it comes along.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Just not a question, but a comment. I'd like to thank Jerry Lee for all the works she did on that. I joined big chunks of one of the days of the meetings, just on, like on the sidebar while I was working, but she was on, I think, all that day and maybe another day. So a lot of time invested for the town. So thanks, Jerry Lee, for all your efforts on it.
Thank you, Stephen. It was a good way to take a good day, a couple of days off of my normal job.
Interesting stuff being talked about, so it's good.
Yes, I'll second that. Thank you, thank you for all that, because I know it's a bunch of work, for sure. So I will go on to Town Hall renovation. Back to you, Mr. Paskowski.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Keep this one brief, I went too long on the other one. So I put together a scope of work for what would be asked of an architect and engineering team that has a historic preservation ability to it, to put together like an assessment, a detailed assessment of the building, looking at all the historic, the fabric and the existing conditions, both the materials, the layout, and then pull together concepts that we could use to have a presentation open town to all town residents. So I have all that pulled together, and I had been working with a previous town manager on putting together RFP on that, but Barbara and I are scheduled to get together to kind of merge all that together, so I'm not sure how long that would take. Guessing Barb may have a lot of good comments on what the chassis of that RFP would be, so we're hoping to get together this week, be able to put that RFP out soon. That's the update.
Great, thank you. Any comments, questions, before we move on to the town managers' report?
Phil, can I ask you, did we ever get a task force up and running for the Pen Place seating options?
Not yet, not yet. That's something I need to do.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Okay. It's eight forty, and Barb, it's up to you for the town managers' report.
Thank you. In terms of the financial report, our revenues and expenses are basically in the approximate range of our expected levels, so no concerns there. Wanted to note that since your last meeting in January, we've issued one building permit. It was issued to the owners of four five oh seven Strathmore Avenue for a second story vertical addition and a new roof, deck, siding and windows. All of you are aware of this, but just for any members of the community who are participating tonight, we will be holding a fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget retreat at seven thirty PM on Wednesday, February twenty-third. And then lastly, I wanted to kind of follow up on two presentations by residents at the January Town Council meeting. As you all likely recall, in her comments last month, Liz King asked for clarification on how the town would handle certain matters regarding the Argyle Sledding Hill. As you all are aware, I drafted a town policy and procedure following the meeting in January. Just wanted to double check with everybody. I did get some feedback from some of you. If there's no additional feedback this evening, what I'd like to do is finalize that document and share it with Ms. King, as well as another Argyle resident who reached out to me within the last week. So I just wanted to see if there were any other comments that anyone wanted to share this evening, if you haven't already weighed in.
No comments, but thanks for doing all that, Barb. It's great to have it all kind of put together that way.
Well, like I say, I will go ahead. I know Elizabeth had a few suggested edits that I'm going to incorporate, and then I will go ahead and send that out to Ms. King tomorrow. And I did have another resident who kind of had a slightly different take than Ms. King, but I would also like to give her an opportunity to kind of share some comments, so I will do that this week. Also, last month, Jack Mandell addressed to you regarding free use of Town Hall for community groups, specifically, he's a member of a book club that had some concerns about, you know, meeting in their homes with the ongoing pandemic, and I guess didn't find the Zoom experience as enjoyable as they would like. Some of you did get back to Kaki and to me with some comments, but once again, I just kind of wanted to close the loop tonight. Those of you who, who did reach out to Kaki and to me expressed some concern about perhaps giving free use of Town Hall, since rentals of the space does generate some revenue for us. One option that the town council- One option that the Town Council may wish to consider, and I have discussed this with Kaki, was possibly charging the lower rate for a class, kind of class instruction, and Elizabeth is our Town Hall expert, so if I misspeak Elizabeth, feel free to jump in here. The normal rate for a class is $35 as opposed to $125 for our residents. This was actually Elizabeth's idea. So it seems like if you want to try to help out some of these community based groups, such as our book clubs, you know, one option you may want to consider is charging a fee, but maybe charging the class fee of $35 rather than 125. Another step you could take was just providing this accommodation strictly to rentals by town residents and perhaps only do it for the remainder of the winter season when folks are obviously uncomfortable, you know, being inside during the pandemic, but it's also too cold to be outside. So I would like to just get some closure on this issue this evening so that I know Elizabeth is in touch with some of the folks who are interested in renting the space. And she's not quite sure understandably what to tell them at this point. So I welcome any feedback that you have, and I'm sure Elizabeth does as well.
Sorry, did I hear you correct, Barbie? You were wondering if it made sense to make it free to residents for the rest of the winter?
I was actually thinking, Stephen, a good middle ground might be not making it free, but charging the lower rate, which would be $35 for residents as opposed to 125. Or certainly, I think the alternative, if you're comfortable with doing it, would be just to put a kind of a shelf life on how long free rentals are given to town residents, since pretty soon, hopefully, it'll be spring.
So my position, Barb, is it should not be free. There's a cost to running Town Hall. There's a maintenance cost. There's a, there's an upkeep.
The first time, I guess the lower rate seems to make sense for the short time. It probably could have a sunset. In the future, if there's more groups that want to have prime time, then it would be unfortunate if a lot of times are booked at the lower rate.
Yes. Anyway, what I was saying was what Stephen just said. I think that some sort of nominal fee through, you know, through spring, you know, through June is fine or something like that. I'm fine with it. I just, free does not, doesn't sit well with me. It opens up a door, a precedent I'm not comfortable with, so personally. And if it's $35 and you have a group of 10, I think everyone can afford, you know, $3.50 to use Town Hall. It's not a big ask.
Other thoughts from anyone?
I think that sounds pretty reasonable and if we wanted to extend it, perhaps, you know, if we see a need again next fall, we could also consider something related to weekdays versus weekends, for example, because I think regular full price town rentals tend to be more typical on weekends. And we, like Stephen and Mario were pointing out, we don't want to, you know, limit the ability for those kind of rentals on the weekends by having it be blocked.
I agree with that.
I agree with Jerry's point as well. It's okay to jump in here. And the blocks of time that are for the weekends, I know are usually like half or full days is the same go for weekdays or can it also be split up into smaller chunks?
Yeah, Elizabeth, why don't you weigh in? Because you're the one who's actually taking the rentals and probably have a better idea of utilization. I think you're still muted, Elizabeth.
You're on.
Okay, got it. You hear me? Okay. Okay, so thanks. Donna, could you repeat your question, please?
Of course, not a problem. I said that I understand that the, because I printed it myself, that the Town Hall is rentable, if you will, for either half or full days during the weekend. Does the same timeframe, is it the same timeframe applicable during the weekdays? And if not, perhaps it would be, you know, beneficial to break down into an hourly rate or what have you.
Okay. Andrea and I had several conversations about this before she left. During this COVID time, we are only booking one event per day for safety reasons, health and safety reasons. And therefore, every renter has from 8:00 AM until 10:30 PM to rent. We have never rented by the hour or by the half day. There's never been a time period attached to the fee. The, all the information about fees, class fees, resident fees, non-resident Garrett Park estate fees is very clear on the website under facilities and activities. And just to mention that there have not been a lot of rentals in the past, I would say, six or seven months. We began renting the hall again on July 6th. It had been closed up until that point. And there's just not been a lot of rentals in general. The question about using Town Hall for book groups has been posed by several different people. And there are two book groups who are going to meet at the same time, just in different parts of the hall. And if you agree, then they will each be charged the instructor fee for residents, which is the $35 fee. Non-resident instructors' fees are $50 per class. So any more questions?
I've got one.
Go ahead, Phil, sorry.
Oh, thanks. If you go 8:30 to 10:30, when would the, I assume that part of this is to clean the Town Hall. When would you actually be able to clean it then?
Well, at this point in time, it hasn't been an issue. It used to be that music together was in the hall two days a week in the mornings and that the senior exercise class was in the hall three mornings a week. That's not happening. So it's, all of the events that we've had have not taken up all that time. It means that you are permitted to have the hall for that period of time from 8:00 AM until 10:30 PM, but that has yet to happen. Usually they are four or five hour events, but we don't want to have more than one group of people in the hall. Just for that very reason, for cleaning and disinfecting. The hall is cleaned thoroughly by a professional group called Huff and Puff, and they are really fabulous. And they come very early on Tuesday mornings, so we don't, we don't plan anything for Tuesday morning. So they're there usually from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM during a thorough cleaning. In between, Frank checks the hall to make sure the trash has been taken out and that everything is as it should be for whoever might be renting next. There are Purell stands attached to the wall outside of the bathrooms and also outside of the kitchen. I've given a number of tours to people who've never rented before. And everyone seems, you know, concerned about wearing masks and distancing and so forth. So I think people, the few people who've been renting the hall have been quite responsible and receptive. If you go online and look at the agreement, you will see that Andrea put in place a, I'm not sure what you call it, I guess it's a kind of addendum to the agreement from Ron Boldt that holds the town, what's the word, not responsible for anyone who may come down subsequent to their use of the hall, anyone who may come down with COVID. So everybody has to sign that agreement in addition to the usual agreement.
So you don't plan on actually having a cleaning in between uses? It'll be just once a week then with some touch up by Frank?
Right, that's right. There is a checklist that is online and it's posted on the refrigerator in the hall and all renters must clean up thoroughly. That means vacuuming, wiping down, count on counter counters. So basically, what Frank would ordinarily be doing, well, what he's done in the past, but now renters are taking more of that responsibility. That's actually been going on for several years and people have been really great about it. So yes, there's no, there is no, now there is no disinfection taking place, but a thorough professional cleaning.
Okay.
So if I may just piggyback on Phil's question, so regardless of the number of times that the hall is rented only, it's only thoroughly cleaned once a week?
Correct.
Okay. And with the state of emergency also reduced, I would think that hopefully would perhaps change that more people would be coming out, masks or no masks. And that I believe, I don't want to claim anything, I'm not a doctor, but it's been pretty clear that COVID is not transmittable easily on surface contact. So that's, that's great about the cleaning at least once a week, but it, I would think that there would be an option perhaps to open it more than the limited amount, should someone be interested.
Yeah, I mean, we'll see if, if more people are interested in renting. You should know that at the start of COVID, Andrea was extremely, gosh, what's the word? This is not a word, but you'll get what I mean, foresightful. She had a lot of foresight and had George assess and we hired a company to go in and upgrade the HVAC system that was in compliance with COVID recommendations. So that is in place. And yes, you're correct that there's no, it's airborne. It's not, it's not communicable by surfaces, so.
So can I just jump in for the sake of time because we're running over now? The question is posed about using, sorry, I don't mean, I agree with what you're saying and I just want to get to the end of this. Barbara, the question was $35 for this, for the groups and the question of whether or not we support that. And then should we, quite frankly, maybe limit the hours so they don't have it from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM for $35? Maybe just get them out of there, get it for three hours and move on. Maybe there's some other.
Mario, the reason for that is so that nobody else is booking the same day. In other words, most people are, let's say, booking from three to seven or something. I go in and I change the reservation online so that it's not accessible to anybody else for the entire day. That's a safety precaution.
Okay, so for this, that's fine, Elizabeth. So for the sake of, since they're not changing safety precautions on this call today and it's one user per day, I'm fine with that for now. We can have a conversation subsequently about whether or not it makes sense to expand it twice a day. That's not for today. So Barbara, $35 is fine with me.
Right.
If it's a resident, run by residents, managed by residents, I'm fine with that. And with, you know, to Jerry Lee's point, maybe we extend it through a certain period of time and then have it revisited come, you know, if we're still living in this crazy world, come the fall and next winter. But for the now, for the next three months, whatever it is, I'm fine with $35. I mean, if it's going to give these folks a chance to go meet and have some sort of quality of life, let's just do it. I'm not looking to gouge before I'm in a box, but it shouldn't be free.
Right, and I understand that and it sounds like there's a kind of an agreement to say for resident, kind of community based groups like a book club, that you are okay with the $35 strictly for resident based groups. We'll try to, I'll talk to Elizabeth a little bit about trying to limit it to the less desirable rental hours, like maybe during the week, which is probably when many of these book clubs are meeting anyway. My suggestion was maybe we revisit it, allow this to go through like the end of May and perhaps at the meeting in May, we kind of talk about it and see where things are at that point. Is everybody okay with that?
Fine with that.
Sorry, Stephen, what?
No, sorry, I'm saying it sounds good. We'll probably know more about how COVID tracks out by then.
Right, exactly. So I think if everybody, yeah, if everyone's good with that, I didn't have anything else still, so.
Barb, I had one question. I noticed that there is a variance sign at the property at 4706 Strathmore Avenue. Will that variance review come up for council review at the next council meeting?
Elizabeth, this is the one we've been talking about.
Jerry Lee, that sign will be removed tomorrow. George Martin and the Land Use Advisory Committee took another look at what was going to be the need for a variance and made the decision that in fact, there was no need for the variance. And that there are a certain, actually, Stephen, are you here?
Yeah.
Stephen? Do you know about that, right?
Yeah, there was some, there's multiple property lines there. Sorry?
Yeah.
Okay, we don't need to go over the detail. I was just curious why it hadn't yet come up. Okay, thank you.
Barbara, I want to just go back to the Town Hall for a minute. Two things. One is, I thought I heard at one point that we might have two groups in Town Hall at the same time, which I thought was.
Yeah, I think two book clubs.
Two, two small book clubs, yes. Two Garrett Park book clubs sharing opposite ends of the hall.
Okay, so one would be in there.
By choice.
Exactly, that's what I was going to say. Is it by choice or by accident?
By choice, yeah. One is the men's club and I think one is the women's club, book clubs.
Whatever. They want to be there together, charge them $35 fees, I'm at it.
Well, you're talking, you know, 10 or 12 people in two different parts of the hall.
Okay, I mean, they would be in that, yeah, as long as they're apart from each other, then that's fine. The other thing was I do believe that we also have free rental for some organizations, the Women's Club and a few others like that.
It's grandfathered in and should be listed on the website. Yes.
I would be grandmothered in for the Women's Club, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mario.
Okay, and on that, unless somebody else has anything else, I will call this meeting adjourned at 9:01. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for filling in, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.